Thank you. Okay, 4.03 PG&E settlement fund request and capital asset authority, radio-based emergency alert system.
Thank you. I'll start that and then I'll ask the sheriff to come up and join. The sheriff submitted this emergency alert system as a proposal to be funded by the PG&E settlement fund dollars. So in accordance to the policy, staff reviewed the proposal and finds that it is in compliance with the policy. And I'll explain. The proposal is in the category of hazard mitigation. It addresses a dangerous condition that was caused by PSPS, and the PSPS is a direct result of the campfire. The proposal is considered urgent, this fire season is upon us, and the sheriff continues to look for leveraging funds for this project. So after reviewing the proposal, the administrative office recommends that the board approves this proposal. And with that, I'll ask the sheriff to speak to the proposal itself.
Good morning, Still.
Good morning, Still, Mr. Sheriff. How are you, members of the board? Mr. Pickett, thank you so much for the introduction. And I come to you on May 11th with a red flag warning in place and our first fire necessitating an evacuation order having occurred on Saturday. And so I think this is a very timely issue, and I want to spend a little time talking with you about it. I am thankfully joined by Matthew Straub from Global Security Systems. That is the organization that has developed and will help implement, assuming that funding is awarded, the Alert FM system. In addition to that, we have on the line Dan Blair, a representative from PG&E, and I'll explain why that is in a moment. To start off with, I would submit to you that not only is Butte County in terms of its emergency response capacity more familiar with and acquainted with the complexities of alert and warning than any other county perhaps in California, but our citizens are also well acquainted, having received many alerts, many warnings, and been subject to evacuations based on pending threats. Alert and warning is a complex issue. It is very difficult ultimately to ensure that you're able to get the message out to the people that need it in a timely manner, under very tense, uncertain, and rapidly evolving situations. What we have learned here in Butte County through our experience dating back to the spillway through all of the fires and most recently is that you have to communicate across multiple platforms. In addition to that, you have to be able to communicate the threat in a way in which the platforms are able to carry the message, and what the response to that threat should be. I know that sounds simple, especially in this age of technology, but I can assure you that it is not. It is a very, very complex thing, especially when you're in the midst of trying to gain situational awareness as to what the threat is and what the appropriate response to be. What we've learned is that you have to have redundancy within the system, because no one single platform will be 100% successful. No one single platform can be counted upon in every situation or disaster, and the campfire certainly showed us that. There's a tendency in our society to rely heavily upon technology. The cellphone has become ubiquitous. It is something that people rely upon on a day-to-day basis to get information of all kinds, including emergency information. Unfortunately, there are vulnerabilities in the system. It is not 100%. And in the heat of a crisis, the infrastructure that supports that can be compromised, or the system can be overloaded by the amount of traffic that is ultimately on it. So that's why we work to develop, again, multiple platforms to communicate. And those platforms, as you know, include our Code Red system, our utilization of the integrated alert and warning system, iPOS, which has a whole host of platforms that we message on, including sending text messages and alerting people through television and news stations. We utilize our social media presence, Facebook, Twitter. We partner with traditional media to try to get the information out in a timely fashion. And of course, we utilize deputy sheriffs and correctional deputies to go into the field, to rush into danger, if you will, to knock door-to-door and try to alert people. And when we don't have time to do that, we've adopted our high-low siren, which is specific to evacuation circumstances. That piece is going to be incorporated into this platform as well, and I'll explain that in a moment. One of the things that became very apparent during the most recent fires was a gap in services, especially in those foothill communities that are often impacted by the public safety power shut-offs, that don't have access to landline telephones. And the people in those communities often rely upon their cellphone for the ability to communicate and receive information. But because cellphone coverage in those remote areas is spotty at best at times, what they often do is utilize the connection that they have to the internet, hooking up their cellphone to the wifi, and then utilizing that connection to receive information. The problem is, when the power gets shut off, they lose their internet connectivity, and as a result, they lose their cellphone connectivity, and we lose the ability to communicate with them emergency notifications either through Code Red, or through iPOS, or their access to our social media platforms, and in many cases, their access to traditional media platforms. And so we were looking for a solution to that particular problem when I was contacted by Matthew Straub, again, from Global Security Systems, the folks that have developed Alert FM. He, having seen what we have gone through in Butte County, wanted to come out and show us this particular solution, and was willing to partner with Butte County because of what we have been through, in the hopes of us filling that gap. So I'm going to, when the questions come as to the technical aspect in terms of how this works, I'm going to bring Matthew up, because I'm not an electrical engineer, I have a rudimentary understanding of it. But ultimately, what it does is utilize the current FM radio system, the band within that system, to send emergency notifications to people. There is an interface with our existing emergency mass notification systems, which allow our staff members to craft the messages in conjunction with the other platforms that we're utilizing to send the message out through the FM radio frequencies. Now, what's interesting about this, or what's unique, and one of the things is that, and Matthew has both this unit as well as the unit for commercial settings, but this would be the unit that I would envision most people would have in their homes. And I think that this unit is particularly appropriate for this circumstance, because, one, it continually monitors the FM frequencies that we would use to send the messages, but it's not turned on all the time, or rather, it's not playing some sound or music all the time. Someone might go, "Well, why don't you just leave your radio on?" Well, no one's going to leave their radio on at 2:00 in the morning when they're trying to sleep, and they may not actually hear it in the background of the noise, right? Secondly, this unit has a light which flashes to alert people who perhaps are hearing impaired or wake people up, and it has the ability to notice them of the message by emitting the high-low siren, which has become synonymous in Butte County with an evacuation that is pending. So we think that that leverages the existing system that we have and incorporates that ultimately. And then from there, they can read what the message is, what the threat is, and what the response is from there. And so with that, I'd like to next invite Matthew up. Let me, come on up, Matthew. And we're going to then go through, and we'll talk about coverage areas and things of that nature. But I want to first have Matthew show you the commercial version, which we would anticipate being in schools and hospitals and commercial buildings of that nature. So Matthew, show us the commercial version.
Okay. Right. So, and one of the other important features before we get to the commercial version is this operates off of a AA battery. So when you lose power, this will continue to operate for up to 30 days. Also, when you evacuate, as you travel through the county and go somewhere else, the receiver automatically scans to the other stations, and you will continue to receive updated information as you leave the area. But more importantly, it will tell you when to come back, when the power's back on, those kind of things. So this is our, you know, personal unit, we call it, the Warner. This is our public display unit. So what's unique about this is that it has a very loud siren, strobe light display, but more importantly, it operates on 3D batteries for up to four years. So literally, you don't have to have, you know, all of the electricians and the mechanical people come out. This literally will hang on the wall or sit in the office, and we use this mainly for, like the sheriff said, for hospitals, schools, you know, corporations, government buildings.
Hey, Matthew, before you leave.
Sure.
So if it operates on FM, and maybe you're going to get into this, but if people have spotty FM coverage, you know, because, or the tower goes down, you know, and the radio station goes out.
Right.
You know, how do you deal with that?
Right. So we have multiple stations. So we're partnered with the FM, commercial FM broadcasters. In fact, we've been endorsed by the California Broadcast Association. In addition, we are endorsed by FEMA, NOAA, and USGS for Shake Alert, just as a note. So we have multiple stations that are actually equipped, and we deliver the messages by satellite to the station. So it's not by internet, and it's not by microwave, it's by satellite, which means that even if you lose those capabilities, you know, internet or whatever, you would still get the message to the station. So those stations are all ideally located around in the county, but mostly, more importantly, outside the county. So even if there was a fire that came down the valleys, Forest Ridge or Concow, you would have other stations that would continue to opt to send messages into those areas, and the receiver, if it loses one station, goes down, it will scan to the next strongest station and automatically synchronize and then continue to receive messages. What's nice about this is, you don't need to know anything about technology to operate it. You literally turn it on, and it does everything in the background. So you don't need to be, especially for the elderly, who, you know, that have a difficult time negotiating technology, this is what they're going to need to have in their bedroom to wake them up. Yep.
And before, so we're going to get into the coverage of the slide that kind of helps with that, and I'll bring Matthew up for that. But before we leave this particular port, are you at a point where you could demonstrate the siren for us?
Sure, sure.
Is that okay with you guys if we do that?
Yeah. So we actually have four different sirens. This is the Sheriff Honi siren, we call it. So, very loud. Yeah, it keeps going.
Can you turn it off?
No, well, on purpose, you can't. Now you can't turn it off. Yeah, it turns off automatically.
Stay close.
Yes, sir.
All right, let's move to the next slide, if we could. And I think we've talked a little bit already about how this system ultimately works using the FM broad-based emergency alert system. Move to the next slide, if you will, please. And I think Supervisor LoSaro, this slide goes to the issue that you were talking about. Matthew came out and started working with our local radio stations and identified various radio towers that the system would be affixed to and then broadcast from, again, as he said, providing that redundancy. Matthew and I actually went out with my staff, and we traveled through a number of the foothill communities, Forest Town and Berry Creek and Concow, and tested the system. And what we found is that overall, there is really pretty good coverage. Now, this is one of the things that's important to keep in mind, because we have to be very clear about this and make sure that we manage expectations, and that is the complexity. There is no 100% foolproof system. There's no way to guarantee 100% coverage in any system. That's why we have redundancy with the systems. And there are certainly places within our county, deep in some of the hollows, if you will, of the foothills, where you're not going to get cellphone service, where you're not going to get radio service. That is true. But the fact of the matter is, by bringing this system in, we will be able to reach more people who currently cannot be reached, but we also provide a level of redundancy across the entire county. I would envision that people in areas that aren't impacted by PSPS would be interested in having one of these units in their home plugged in, waiting, because, I don't know about you, but at night, I put my phone on do not disturb, and I may not get the phone call that comes through, but if this goes off with the siren and the light, I would be in a better position to hear what was going on. Can we skip to, or go to the next slide, please?
Sheriff, before you move off that slide, I noticed the top part of the county, like up in the very top portion, maybe that's Megalia, Sterling City area up there, it's not in the red zone.
Up in the Butte Meadows area.
Oh, Butte Meadows, is that? Okay.
So I'm going to bring Matthew up and have him talk a little bit about what that coverage looks like. Those are challenging places, and I will tell you, not only are they challenging for alert and warning, they're challenging for our own radio system in terms of us to be able to communicate on that whole thing. But my hope is that, in rather short order, we can inspire other counties to adopt a similar system that would then allow us to work collaboratively with those systems as well. But I'll let Matthew speak to this particular graph.
Thank you, Sheriff. So first of all, this is an estimate, okay? So this is, and so we've made an arrangement with any of our customers. Our expectation is, you know, we've been working with CalOES for four years about this type of system and some other parts of the state. So ultimately, there'll be 300-plus radio stations that'll be connected across the state. So every station we add benefits all of the citizens of California, so it's in our interest to continue to add, build out the network. So to answer, short answer is, we would just add another station, but we've actually went out and looked at that area, and we can still get coverage, even though it doesn't show it in the coverage map. So we're guaranteeing coverage for the whole county with the system. The other thing I wanted to point out is that those broadcast systems, commercial broadcast radio operators, they have an incentive to continue to operate and maintain their stations, and they also, most of them, if not all, have generator backup. So they're going to continue to operate in the same way that we would expect for any type of emergency situation. In other words, they have an incentive to stay on the air, not to mention, they're continuing to broadcast emergency information before, during, and after the disaster on their main channel, because they're invested in the community.
I just have one more question for you. Sorry. This just interests me because of the radio stations.
Yep.
Also, what about KCHO or NSPR, you know, it being an FM? I just noticed it's not on there, and I know that it mostly covers the west side. I know we don't get really good coverage over, like, when you get over into this area. Is there a reason, though, it's not on the map?
Well, my engineers design, they do a system analysis, and it's very, it's pretty complicated, actually. So it doesn't mean that wouldn't be on there, it doesn't mean they couldn't be on there. So this is not a final configuration.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I think a lot of this has to do with the fact that I wouldn't allow Matthew to come to Butte County and talk until he came to Butte County with me, and we flew around and tested the system and looked at it, and I wanted to see what it looked like before we came here. So that's part of our initial planning of that whole system. All right. So moving next to the request for, and what we're requesting utilized PG&E settlement funds for is the build-out of the system, the system that allows us to send the messages. There's another piece of it, and that's the receivers that will have to work on getting into the hands of community members to receive the messages. But ultimately, this request is for $625,000. That includes the initial build-out of the system, which is about $500,000. I am told by Matthew that that is the Butte County rate, which is less than perhaps other rates, and I think that has a lot to do with the fact that he recognized Butte County's position in this particular space, the fact that we are, the fact that we are very, very versed and experienced in this particular realm, and the fact that I told him I would work with him to try to inspire other counties and other sheriffs to collaborate with us on this, so that we would have a much, much broader network across northern California. And to that end, we've already begun some discussions. The next piece of this comes into, you know, the receiver, right? And this is something that we have to get into the hands of the people in our community. And my understanding is that these are about $60 apiece. And we were looking at trying to find revenue sources to offset or subsidize the cost of those receivers, especially for those people who live in those areas that are impacted by the PSPS situation and who rely upon their internet connectivity for cellphone connection. And I spoke with county admin about pursuing some various grant funding along those lines, but I also had an opportunity to reach out to PG&E and spoke with their leadership and was very, very pleased to learn that they have an interest in partnering with Butte County for this. And with that in mind, I have Dan Blair from PG&E online, and if we can allow, I'm going to turn it over to Dan to make your comments. Dan, can you hear us?
Good morning, I can hear you. Can you hear me okay?
Yep. Take it away, Dan.
Great. Well, thank you, Sheriff Honi, and good morning, Chair Connolly and members of the board. I'm Dan Blair at PG&E. I apologize for not attending today in person, but I had previous family commitments made out of town, and thank you for the opportunity to comment on this item. As Sheriff Honi addressed, alert and warning notifications are a huge concern for those residents with voice-over IP service and no cell coverage who are impacted by PSPS events or other electric outages. As the sheriff mentioned, we've been in conversations on potential solutions, and I know members of our team also participated in the, at least one of the Alert FM demonstrations. And we agree that this is a great option to increase public safety, and as mentioned, my leadership is committed to partnering with the county on providing analytics around how many customers who are potentially impacted in PSPS events would need receivers to utilize the system. We see this as a great pilot program that could be deployed to other counties throughout our service territory, as mentioned previously by the sheriff. We're also exploring what options we might have to support the deployment of these home-based receivers. We've deployed other programs to reduce PSPS impacts, such as our generator rebate programs for those that are on wells, and backup batteries for those using home medical equipment. I don't have any specifics on what this program will quite look like yet, but I wanted to speak today to emphasize our support and commitment to public safety, our customers, and reducing as many impacts of PSPS as we reasonably can. I expect to have some updates on what that program might look like and what we could do to support in the coming weeks. And that concludes my comments, and again, thank you, Sheriff Honi, and members of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Blair. I appreciate that. And again, I'll just haste to add that I've had conversations with PG&E leadership as recently as last week, and told them of the significant need to address this in that particular population affected by the PSPS. They have been very receptive to those comments, and I am optimistic that we will be able to find a pathway forward where they will be able to support the effort to get these receivers into the hands of other people. I know that also, in working with county admin and also emergency management, looking for other funding opportunities that would make these units available to other individuals, not necessarily impacted by the PSPS, is the way we've talked about, but perhaps low-income individuals who might have a difficult time acquiring one of these. My hope is that if you approve the funding, we can get these into the homes of as many people as possible, and it can become part of the network or part of the system, part of the platform that we use. And as Matthew pointed out, this is something you can grab and go and get updated alerts, and it's not dependent upon your cellphone. So if we could go to the next slide, I think this summarizes our request. So request provide, my request that you provide funding for Alert FM Emergency Notification System. Total request is $500,000. Staff is seeking outside funding for the cost of annual maintenance and support. This is a priority area hazardous mitigation with a direct tieback to the campfire, and there is the urgent need. And so the remainder of the 625 goes to the ongoing service for the first five years, that we would need to keep that up and running. I will address one other thing, and Supervisor LoSaro, thank you for sending me an email with regard to the comment that you got from a local amateur radio person talking about their effort to build out something similar that they think would be at a reduced cost. Certainly appreciate their effort, and we find value in our local amateur radio group. They are actually part of the solution to this problem. We rely upon our partnership with them as well. That said, without details, we couldn't adequately compare and contrast the two systems. I will note, though, that as Mr. Straub has pointed out, Alert FM is validated by FEMA, the National Weather Service, the USGS. It's proven and used daily across the country. They actually provide the Shake Alert for...
Just licensed to do that?
Yeah, licensed to do the Shake Alert for the state of California, correct?
In Oregon and Washington.
In Oregon and Washington. So they're already in the market, they're already tested, approved. They use the satellite to deliver this signal to these towers, as opposed to relying upon microwaves or some other form. It is, ultimately includes the strobe light, which wakes people, the siren, and the notice. And I guess I would end my comment with the email, said that they're working on it. Well, that would suggest to me that it's not yet developed, not yet tested, and I don't know that they have, they haven't contacted us to talk about what the interface would be in terms of how my staff would access the system to provide the information ultimately to people. So at the end of the day, given the urgency of the situation, given what I'm concerned we're facing going forward with wildfires and other disasters that we'll need to provide alert and notification, I want a system that has actually been tested and proved before I rely on something that may not be fully vetted.
Did you also, have you contacted North Valley Community Foundation? Like, would they be interested in helping citizens attain this, like, low-income citizens? Or is there a possibility of writing a grant for, to attain the units?
So I have not personally had conversation with North Valley Community Foundation. They have been very supportive in the past. I think this is the kind of project that they would be very supportive of. I know that members of the CAO's office has looked at the potential of partnering with them as well. I honestly thought that this would be a great partnership with PG&E.
Well, I agree with that.
Given the situation that we're dealing with, which is why I focused most of my effort in contacting them. And again, I appreciate their willingness to step up and partner with us there.
Sheriff Honi.
Yeah, sorry.
That's okay. It's hard to tell who's talking over here. In 2018, we did a drill up in Forest Ranch using the alert system, and the idea was to see, you know, how many people would get the message, and then to actually run through, and folks came to the school, they even brought their animals. And after, excuse me, after the drill, it was found that less than 30% of the residents actually got the notification over the phone system.
Uh-huh.
And so, you know, this weekend's event made it very clear that our CERT team is doing a fantastic job, and the use of the GMRS radios is helpful and useful.
Yep.
But not everyone is going to go through that process to get trained.
True.
And so I think having, having something that is actually satellite-based, I don't know how many people saw the 60 satellites being launched last week, and, you know, they're saying there's going to be 1,300 satellites that are going to be launched this year. So I think having something that is using the satellites is really going to help protect our residents that are in the more remote areas.
Agreed.
So I appreciate you bringing this forward.
Well, I'll tell you, just comment, and, you know, that fire on Saturday moved so fast. Fortunately, it was in an area where the fuel load wasn't of the type that we saw up in Megalia and Paradise and Concow. But the concern was, I mean, it was very close to the ridge, right? And our concern was that it could have got up in there. Fortunately, CAL FIRE did a great job of getting ahead of that, and, you know, we got our evacuations going. But, yeah, it is, it comes back to what you talked about. You have to have multiple platforms, you have to message across multiple platforms. You can't guarantee 100% saturation of any message, and then, of course, you have the human factor, because even when you get the message out, you can't guarantee that people will heed the warning.
Any other questions or comments?
Public comment?
We have public comment, I know, I received it electronically. And do we have anyone?
And do we have anyone that wants to speak today?
Mr. Stonebreaker.
All right. Come on up.
I'd say one tieback that wasn't mentioned is that a lot of people who got stuck in traffic on November 8th are still very anxious about the next evacuation, and the reactions of people on the upper ridge when the sky turned orange last September, and when people smelled smoke from fires down in the ranch lands. We need more tools than we currently have, this is not the solution, but it is a part of the solution. One thing that I noticed looking into this that hasn't been mentioned is the specificity, and maybe somebody can address this, but it seems that this system can target more accurately, more narrowly than the all-hazards radio, which seems to be like county by county. The one thing that concerns me is the policy for this particular fund seems to require that for an ongoing expense, there has to be a source of funding after the initial term. So, I worry that if there's not another source of funding, that all of these receivers will turn into paperweights. So, that's something that I would like to have addressed before money is taken out of this particular pot, even though I agree that this is an urgent need to have something, an additional source of information out to the public, because some people aren't going to have their cell phones, or some people aren't going to have internet, whether the tower is off, or whether people are asleep, all of these other things, that to have these in houses, if we can get them into houses, is a great thing. Regarding the funding sources, the County of Sonoma has recently issued all-hazard weather radios through a FEMA grant, so there may be sources of funding that can get these radios into, or the radio receivers into other homes that PG&E might not be willing to directly fund. The other thing that I would ask about is how the workflow can work, the conjunction between this system and the existing AM information systems? Like, one of our projects has been to get 1460 AM working again, because it was not working in 2018 when we needed it, and it was not working last fall when we needed. It seems like we do have that working now, that the sheriff's office can send the messages to the transmitter, and the transmitter can send that to people, so they can get on their handcrank radios and see what is going on. Last September, we didn't know where the fire was, where we needed to, you know, who needed to evacuate when. And so, if something like this can work in conjunction with the existing systems, because as the sheriff said, we need multiple platforms to make sure that as many people are getting informed as quickly as possible. And I would like to say to the excellent public speaker over here, we would love to have this addressed directly to the Upper Ridge Community Council, because there's a lot of concern about this, that people who are on the ridge are itchy about it, and people who are displaced from the ridge are hesitant to come back because of the experience they had in 2018. So, if this can help calm people's fears and make the next evacuation less harrowing than the previous one was, we are very much for this use of the funds.
Yes, Chair Connolly, the following members of the public submitted electronic public comment, Diana Theobald, Leslie Kosky, Mike Maloney, Monte Markle, Nanette Roadhouse, and Ben Hart.
Okay.
I move to commit $500,000 in PG&E settlement funds for a radio-based emergency alert system and approved capital asset purchase.
Can I ask another question?
Sure.
I was just wondering, has, and this may be from Matthew. Have you approached the development community to install these when they are rebuilding homes or building homes, and is that a possibility?
Yeah, so, ultimately, our goal is to, there's a, put the FM radio chip inside of smoke detectors, ring devices, those kinds of things. That's a very long-term project, you're dealing with, you know, large consumer electronic companies, so.
Okay.
And also, I just wanted to just mention that this comment, the comments you made were really good, because I didn't point out that all of each one of those receivers are addressable. So, what that means is that, and we can put them in groups, so we have a very granular way of alerting people. So, I didn't, I'm making sure that point was made.
All right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay, passes unanimously. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it. Take care.
For making our citizens safer.